Okay. So you want all of council down, right? Or all of us that are here?
And then take a picture.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, alright, that's fine. Yes, that sounds fine.
Cool, and then so I'll just say that and then. I love them, I know I miss them too. Yeah, that's it. Okay, so you'll say something? You'll say something like, they stay active, like, take a picture with them, they stay up. Okay. Thank you for coming, Sal, I don't really have a picture. So, yeah.
So I just have to come down, I don't have to say anything, right?
I think you'll have enough things to say tonight.
Probably. How'd it feel so sparse up there? Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. He won't be in.
Did I give you one of these?
Um.
I'm tired, I just get my inner baby back.
Yeah, well, that's no easy thing.
No, goodness. I had no hat on. You look amazing. Well, thank you, of course.
So Stephanie, when I read the proclamation for the Bill of Rights, um, should I just tell everybody there are copies of the Bill of Rights? Or the, the?
Oh, yeah, so, and we put them right on that back table. Yeah, okay, so, I didn't put the two together that they were linked, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, that's why they're here and you.
And then our city attorney, he's got us the actual profit. Is someone here to fix it?
Do we have it?
Can you sign it tomorrow at the air management meeting?
Yeah, I can sign. Who does it go to?
Uh, who does this go to?
Yeah.
I don't know, I thought maybe you knew. No one's here to, like, accept it, right?
If there is somebody here, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, Krista didn't think that there was.
Okay.
So I think.
And so, and this will be changed too, right? Because I called the city attorney today, um, I'm gonna put my name in.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so she'll have a pretty one with a seal and everything on it tomorrow that you can sign.
Okay.
Does that work?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get a cell phone case. Lucky little struck person.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. If the council would please take their seat, we'll get started. Good evening, I would like to call this evening's regular city council meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Father, please be with us now as we meet together. Inspire us in our thoughts and our deliberations. Allow our deliberations to be wise and practical. With your help, we will achieve success. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Sierra. Member Berentine.
Present.
Member Cuesta.
Present.
Member Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Russell.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Olson. Five present and two absent, the two absent being council member Sierra and council, and Mayor Olson.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 19th, 2018.
I move to approve the city council meeting minutes from November 19th.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there, is there any discussion? I would like to amend the minutes, there are two spelling errors in the unscheduled public comment. Seven A, it is Becky Deal, D-E-A-L. And the second name, seven B, is Erin Reed. Any other comments or discussion? Please vote.
A vote to be cast, let the record show five ayes.
And just for the public's information, I will show up as the mayor Linda Olson in the vote, but she won't be counted, I will, so, just so you understand that. Let's go on to agenda item number six, recognition of scheduled public comment. And the first thing on the agenda this evening is the student art calendar recognition. And I believe that we have Krista Gravy here, and is Krista here?
I can start.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start. Thank you, everybody, good evening, and thank you for coming to help us recognize the students whose artwork is featured in the 2019 Inglewood calendar. We're pleased to see so many of you here to help us honor these talented artists. Before we get started, we have some guests in the audience we would like to recognize. The Inglewood School Board members, President Tina Prang, Kevin Ebert, Sharon Shemensky, Jen Hubbard, Katie Husbands. We would also like to recognize Superintendent of Inglewood Schools, Dr. Wendy Rubin. We would also like to recognize all of our wonderful art teachers. Katie Arnall, art teacher at Bishop Elementary. Mary Lynn Baird, the art teacher at Clayton Elementary. Kate Delaney, art teacher at Charles Hay World School. Ryan Talbot, art teacher at All Souls School. Emily Winthrop, art teacher at Inglewood High School. Kim Young, art teacher at Colorado's Finest High School of Choice. We'd also like to recognize our school administrators, Ryan West, principal at Inglewood High School. Shanna Martin, principal at Bishop Elementary. Ryan Cowell, principal at Charles Hay World School. Dr. Bobby Skaggs, principal at Colorado's Finest High School of Choice. And also Jenny Buster, principal at Clayton Elementary School. And Tracy Alarcon, the principal at All Souls School. We'd like to offer a very special thanks to the art teachers, the school administrators, and of course, the parents who support these talented artists every day. A little background on our calendar, each year, the city of Inglewood puts together a calendar that showcases the artwork of the Inglewood's talented student artists. To help choose the artwork that is included in the calendar, we hold an art contest that is open to all students who live in Inglewood or go to school at Inglewood schools. The artwork is voted on by our council members, members of the Culture Arts Commission, and members of the Inglewood Arts Community. In 2019, the 2019 calendar features 13 pieces from this year's student contest. I'm going to ask our mayor Protem to step to the front of the dais and help hand out gifts to our students, as well as shake each student's hand, and also ask executive assistant Krista Gravy to help. And I will be assisting, passing out the art.
Did you want to rest, council?
Yeah, I think also, I think at the end, maybe we recognize each student and then we end.
Did you want to rest? Oh, okay.
Before we recognize the artists, I would also like to acknowledge our generous sponsors for the 2019 Inglewood calendar. The Inglewood Arts Commission assists the city in planning and development of cultural activities in Inglewood. Frame to Art, an Inglewood business owned by Brian Hart. Each year, Frame to Art beautifully frames and mats each piece of artwork for the calendar. And the Museum of Outdoor Arts, the art museum located in our civic center. The museum staff hangs a student's artwork each year and hosts the art reception for the top 50 artists. As gifts from the city council, artists will receive tickets to the upcoming show at the Museum of Outdoor Arts. That show is called Natura Obscura, and these tickets are magic tickets, which will allow entry to the show at any time. The show begins on January 11th. Artists will also receive tickets to an upcoming Inglewood arts concert in Hampden Hall, here at the Inglewood Civic Center. Now let's recognize the artists. I would like each artist to come forward as I call your name. Logan Wartman, a fifth grader at Clayton Elementary. It's a big piece. Logan's piece is called Long Legged Chicken and is featured as the cover piece for next year's calendar. Next, we have Hunter Bright, a 10th grader at Colorado's Finest High School of Choice. Hunter's piece is entitled Galaxy and is featured as the January artwork. Next, we have Ryder Aitkin. Ryder is a first grader at Charles Hay World School. Ryder's piece is called Icy and is featured as the February artwork. Next, we have Elliot Angler. Elliot is a 10th grader at Colorado's Finest High School of Choice. Elliot's piece is entitled Iridescent and is featured as the March artwork. Next, we have Leah Kern, a 12th grader at Colorado's Finest High School of Choice. Leah's piece is entitled Rabbit in E Minor and is featured as the April artwork. Next, we have Talia Green, a third grader at Clayton Elementary. Talia's piece is called Striped in Pink and is featured as the May artwork. Next, we have Otto Ellie, a kindergartner at All Schools Catholic School, All Souls Catholic School. Otto's piece is called Half Luigi with Some Color and is featured as the June artwork. Next, we have Ava Knox, a kindergartner at All Souls Catholic School. Ava's piece is called Mona Lisa and is featured as the July artwork. Next, we have Chris Wosner, a 12th grader at Inglewood High School. Chris's piece is entitled Someone Else's Shoes and is featured as the August artwork. Next, we have Ismea Sanchez, a fifth grader at Charles Hay World School. Ismea's piece is called Be a Chicken. Next, we have Althea Kish, a fourth grader at Clayton Elementary. Althea's piece is untitled and is featured as the October artwork. Next, we have Trianna Perry, a 10th grader at Inglewood High School. Trianna's piece is entitled Heavens Above and is featured as the November artwork. Next, we have Guinevere Sailors, a 10th grader at Inglewood High School. Guinevere's piece is entitled Blue Mountain Range and is featured as the December artwork. Now let's give these artists another round of applause. Now I'd like to ask all of the artists to come back up and for all of council to step down, please, so that we can take a group picture.
Bring your pictures with you.
If you can.
Yes.
Maybe start over here, I think everyone's gonna shift and squeeze.
Thanks to all of you for coming this evening to help us recognize these talented artists. And don't forget, artists, there are calendars and cookies available on the table outside of this council chambers in the atrium. These are wonderful gifts for your friends and family.
Thank you all very much, and congratulations.
I'd like, I'd like that we get a couple chicken pictures now.
Can't have enough?
Oh, cute.
I love how they choose the titles for their pieces, too. That's sometimes something my favorite thing.
It is, it's cool. So, we'll wait just a couple of minutes till it quiets down a little bit.
I'm not sure what the bee was, but I think that's cute. But I don't see the bee, but I think that's cute.
Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. And our first speaker for scheduled public comment this evening is Emily Gonzalez, an Inglewood resident and representative of Friends of Inglewood Parks, will address council regarding Inglewood parks. Good evening, Emily.
Good evening, Emily Gonzalez, 2115 East Dartmouth Circle. That's what I was supposed to say, right? Yep. I did send an email to council with a couple updates, so I'll walk through that. But I also wanted to give an overview for those that are here today. So I am one of a leadership team from the Friends of Inglewood Parks, and we are just a grassroots organization that really believe that our Parks Department needs more funding than our city budget allows. So our goal is to secure a sustainable funding source for the parks in order to fulfill their 2017 master plan, which outlines $30 to $50 million worth of needs. So I think one thing that you heard from the folks that came last month, I think it was Olivia and Laura, was that we really appreciate and love our parks. I take my three-year-old and one-year-old to the park all the time, and my three-year-old loves to use his little strider bike at Packy Roman's and go up and down the hills. So the Parks Department is doing a great job with what they have. We just believe that they don't have enough. And it's not just F that believes it. The 2017 master plan shows that 85% of residents use our parks. The latest demographic study in Inglewood shows that there are more and more younger people moving in, and over half have lived in Inglewood five years or less. And I think that these younger folks, 18 to 44, those are the families with children, and of course, also older folks use parks. The survey results from the National Recreation and Parks Association show that 78% of Americans want more money spent on parks. And right now, we're short $30 to $50 million. When we compare our funding for our parks to nearby areas, it's a little bit embarrassing. South Suburban has eight-and-a-half mil levy to pay for their South Suburban parks. We're nowhere near that. Denver just passed a quarter percent sales tax increase in this past November for specifically just parks and recreation. When we look at our numbers, we really are struggling, and I think that that's a concern as we continue to try to be a city that attracts businesses and more and more residents. So, what we are, what we are currently doing and what we've done recently, we've met with Budget Advisory Committee and the Parks and Rec Commission, and we're working with them to help identify the best way to secure this funding source. So if it needs to be a bond or a mil levy, mil levy, excuse me, or a sales tax, or what they think that that might be. So the Parks and Rec Department is hoping to get an official green light, as my understanding, from council so that they can continue this research. The Budget Advisory Committee has voiced their support and will be submitting some sort of memo, is my understanding from the last meeting that I attended with them. Our leadership team just met two days ago, and so our, our big next steps is to recruit more volunteers so that we can work to get something passed in 2019 once we have identified exactly what it is that we want to be putting on the ballot. But like I said, we're really hoping to engage the departments in ensuring that what we're asking for actually makes sense and will fulfill the needs that they've identified in their master plan. Because really, our, our hope is to support the Parks and Rec Department, not to be some crazy group of, of residents. So our next leadership committee meeting is on Saturday, January 12th, at 10:00 a.m. at Nixon's, and that's open to anyone who might be interested. As well as we have some links on our website, friendsofinglewoodparks.wordpress.com, and some stuff on Nextdoor and Facebook for anyone who might be hoping to learn more. As far as for the council, I'm really here to ask for your support in this kind of research phase. I know that y'all might not be in support of the, a tax increase, but I really do think it would be helpful in ensuring that the Parks Department feels that they are able to do those next steps. They need to feel that they have the green light from council. And it would, I guess, my, my biggest ask then also would be, it would be really nice for council to consider in the coming months, voting to put that on the ballot, because we'll be doing enough groundwork to pass it, or to work to pass it. So that would be, that's what the Denver City Council did. They voted to put it on the ballot rather than through signature. So that's where I am, my little thing is gonna turn red soon, so I'll, I'll wrap up again. Thank you for your work as council members, and, and a big thank you to the Parks Department and everything that they are doing, because they are doing a lot with very little.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, will address council to speak against Council Bill 48 to allow retail marijuana cultivation within the city of Inglewood. Good evening, Ms. Bailey.
Kathleen Bailey, 4686 South Jason Street. Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council members. Inglewood citizens are in no obligation to meet the needs and wants of the multi-billion-dollar retail marijuana drug industry. I am here tonight to oppose Council Bill 48, the Retail Cultivation Ordinance. This ordinance amends the current Inglewood municipal code to allow retail marijuana grow operations within the city of Inglewood. Presently, in our small, family-oriented suburban city of Inglewood, by the vote of the Inglewood citizens, there is a comfortable minimal presence of both medical marijuana and retail marijuana for those citizens who voted for that access. While the minimal presence itself remains a simple respectful consideration for the thousands of Inglewood citizens who, like myself, by their vote, did not want any retail marijuana presence at all. CB 48 is not a minor tweak in our marijuana laws. Council Bill 48 literally opens up our city to begin receiving new applications from retail marijuana operators who want to have access to come into our city specifically to establish retail marijuana warehouse grow operations. And Council Bill 48 changes our zoning laws to accommodate this and to allow retail marijuana grow operations in excess of 5,000 square feet. Under Council Bill 48, the marijuana industry can apply to establish as many legal retail marijuana warehouse grow operations as their deep pockets can arrange to establish within our business, light industrial, and industrial areas. Just one of the many negative consequences of Council Bill 48 will be that our business, light industrial, and industrial rent rates will skyrocket to take advantage of the deep pockets of the retail marijuana drug industry, squeezing out or hampering other industries from competing for that space, just as our city is currently poised for the redevelopment and beautification of our central business district in order to attract new businesses to our city, or unless the intention of our city leaders is to make retail marijuana grow operations, the new big industry in Inglewood. And why does Inglewood want to do this? For the once-a-year $1,000 licensing fee? While the marijuana drug industry will make millions from the pot they grow in Inglewood? Do all of you simply believe that the retail marijuana they will grow in Inglewood will remain legally in our state and not be part of the illegal trafficking of Colorado pot to other states? Or is that something city leaders don't believe you need to concern yourselves with? I personally do not want my city growing pot for the marijuana drug industry. According to the Colorado Department of Revenue, as of November 1st, 2018, there are 702 licensed retail marijuana grow operations in the state of Colorado, of which 226 are in our large neighboring capital city of Denver, zero in our small, family-oriented suburban city of Inglewood, and zero in our neighboring suburban city of Littleton. Zero retail marijuana grow operations in our small Inglewood city is a direct reflection of the will of the Inglewood citizens. Our city's current municipal codes concerning marijuana are a direct result of the votes cast by the Inglewood citizens on election ballot measures, including ballot measure 302. And those votes of the Inglewood citizens excluded the licensing of retail marijuana grow operations. I inquired how this city could legally change the will of the people without another vote, and it was explained to me that our city attorney can argue that because ballot measure 302 does not specifically prohibit retail marijuana cultivation operations, a new ballot measure and new vote is not required. So, is our city attorney intending to make that argument? And if so, why? She could just as easily make the opposing argument that the fact that it was specifically excluded confirms the will of the Inglewood citizens. Is the marijuana industry threatening lawsuit? They've done that before. I would like to know if a business that was established in Inglewood under the existing marijuana laws would be so disrespectful of the Inglewood citizens that they would rather sue Inglewood citizens to get what they want rather than respectfully placing their request on a ballot for the Inglewood neighbors to decide, especially since Nature's Kiss already has an alternative to instead apply to do this at their Denver location where it is already legal. If our leaders want to pursue this, then I ask that you show respect for and consideration of the will of the citizens and place this as a ballot measure for the next election to allow Inglewood citizens to make this major decision themselves. CB 48 is currently rescheduled for a city council vote on December 17th. I am asking again tonight, as I did on November 19th, that this city council please respect the vote of the Inglewood citizens and vote no on Council Bill 48. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next public speaker this evening is J.J. Marjotta, an Inglewood resident, will address council. Good evening, Mr. Marjotta.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Protem. My name is J.J. Marjotta. I live at 29 East Radcliffe Avenue, Inglewood, Colorado, way to 113. This evening, I have come up before you because I wanted to speak about some things that kind of hit home for the city. Right now, the city is amongst of a transition of great change, and that's the way I look at this. Make Inglewood great again. I think we're on the cusp of doing some really amazing things. But with that being said, I think we really need to take a look at proper compensation packages for people that are within the city. What I mean by that is, when we try to hire for the director positions and for the new incoming city manager, hopefully, once we find one, we are gonna take a look at what the average pay rate is for those individuals and make sure that it's in comparison to other cities around us. Well, that also goes to city council. I think one of the things that we do, we come up here as members of the public, and we keep coming up, and we beat you guys up on week after week, and I do it myself. So, I want to make sure that we are trying to find qualified people as people term out, as people need to be there, people that want to be part of this. Now, when I say this, a lot of it has to stem from the time and effort that people put in. It's great in a lot of cases that people want to volunteer their time, but in no business do we let the least-paid people run a corporation. But yet, in the city of Inglewood, the people that are actually paid the least, you can actually find this information online, are the seven of you. So, I'm gonna make a proposal that we start to take a look at that. We bring some salaries into your salaries, specifically into play, and start to look at that for the betterment of not just yourself, your personal lives, and the time that you guys spend, because the amount of time it takes to go through the council packets, the study sessions, I personally have got thousands of hours racked up just in the past year of looking through these documents. So, I can't imagine what it takes for you. So, for the future, for us to have leaders in our community, we really need to truly look at, for the betterment of this city, either full-time positions for the city council, or we need to take a look at compensating the city council so we can get some business leaders in here that understand what financial responsibility looks like and can read a financial statement, and start to look at bringing the city to a positive instead of a negative surplus. So, I'm going to ask that we take a look at that. The other thing that I'd like to speak to this evening is, we're just starting to get into the Christmas spirit, and I know that everybody wants to reach out to their neighbors. And I think that this evening was really a nice thing with the calendars and things like that. It was really great. But I think one of the things that we have here is we have a lot of people that don't really show up to a lot of council meetings, and I think that that's really great, that all these people are able to come out and get to see council work a little bit and some of those things. But I also am cognizant of the homeless situation, and I want to bring that up. This homeless situation, I've been on since May of this year. It is directly affecting my business. I'm telling you right now, it's affecting my business. I walked out the doors on Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday, of my business, and literally, I counted 12 homeless within a two-block radius. Now, they're trying to get to the cold-weather program, but in the meantime, there was literally two sets of two that were within a block of my business screaming at the top of their lungs and yelling and arguing. All that does is drive people away. We need to be cognizant of that. We need to understand what we're asking these nonprofits to do, that it's impacting our lives. 12 within a two-block radius. I mean, it's getting to be excessive. We're finding sleeping shelters behind buildings, behind bushes, and this is chronically going. I'm finding everything imaginable behind my building again. And it's just gonna get worse as the things go on. So, I'm gonna ask again that we start to take a proactive approach with this homeless situation, and not just ignore it. And it's only gonna get worse. And I don't know what else to do. We have Giving Heart, which is down the block, which is trying to do a good job to help the homeless, but literally, it is impacting our businesses around that area. We really need to take a look at it. It's now been over nine months, and nothing has changed, and it's gonna keep getting worse. So, with that, I would like to say thank you very much for the city council's time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Marjotta? Seeing none, thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Jerry Walker, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding decorum. Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council members. My name is Jerry Walker, 4180 South Pearl Street, Inglewood, Colorado. And it's very interesting that we have given out constitutions tonight. Extremely interesting, as a matter of fact. Are there any council members up there who cannot see me or hear me? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I just wanted to check, because a lot of people come up here and talk at this microphone that apparently are not heard or not seen because their problems never seem to be addressed. It's kind of an interesting situation. And then, out of nowheres, there's this unexcusable, desperately attack on a senior citizen who is handicapped, who is exercising her freedom of speech, her rights underneath the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. And she was just basically attacked. Why? Tired of listening to us? You could just turn off the mic. You don't really need to have it. You can just have your own city council meeting and not worry about all the problems that we have out here on this side. I mean, the Mayor Protem and the mayor always ask, are there any questions? And the young people have a great answer for that. It's called crickets. And the reason it's called crickets is that's all you can hear, is crickets. It's not like somebody stands up and says, "Well, maybe we'll look into that, or maybe we'll take care of that, or maybe we'll fix that." We only have one person on council who even appears to hear us and does answer our questions on occasion. And that would be Councilwoman Lorette Berentone. She almost always makes a comment or has a question or something like that. But it's like, can you hear me? I just wanted to check. Everybody's kind of looking down and around now, so I don't know if anybody can hear me or not. I think that this attack was probably because you're just tired of listening to us up here, that we come up with the same problems that never get fixed. That's why we come up with the same problems. You get aggravated. So, what was the reason for that attack? Absolute reason, I have some ideas. I could be wrong. You might could pick from a list. Tired of hearing about it? Kind of boring? I don't know. I don't know why you would attack a senior citizen who is a citizen of the city of Inglewood. I don't know. Don't get it. Maybe somebody up there has an answer, but I seriously doubt that we'll ever hear it, okay? Because, I don't know. I mean, I just feel like you guys are just statues up there and not... There's nobody up there unless you're ready to attack, and then all of a sudden, you come to life, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none.
No surprise.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Elaine Holtz, an Inglewood resident. She will address council this evening. Good evening, Ms. Holtz.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Elaine Holtz, 3333 South Lincoln Street, Inglewood, 80113. Very interesting that you're handing out the information on our government. I think more of us should read that and keep ourselves abreast of what the rules are. And by the way, I did win in court when someone tried to take away my right of free speech. As long as I am still on this earthly plane, I will still use that right. Everybody has that right. I've never stood in anybody else's way when it comes to their rights. I don't like mine being stepped on either. But anyway, judge's force, is all I can say. I want to talk about EEF. I've been working on EEF, oh God, for so many years. It's like a broken record. But I have to say this. I'm very concerned about this audit. Because according to the information that I obtained, and I obtained it, by the way, before this new group came in to take over the board. I obtained it actually in 2016 before our financial eagle had left the city. I'm not gonna mention names. You all know who he was. I happen to prefer him. I was sorry that he did leave. I asked him to stay, and he just felt he had to leave. I wished him well. But, I'm concerned about the type of audit. Number one, we do know that the procedures were never followed. We know that. Number two, when an investigation was made, even though it was untimely by the DA's office, every one of the people who worked for that committee had the same impression that there was mismanagement of funds. When I was doing my audit of the paperwork that I found, and I had 70-some pages of it, of their checks that they were putting out there and who they were paying for all these different services, I saw discrepancies. So, if we do not get the information to show where the money went and what it was for, because as the employee said, they thought that no bids were put out, we knew that. We don't have to get that in an audit. We know that. The point is this. The amount of money that was being spent for services is questionable. And that's the thing that the people in this town are concerned about. I am very strongly concerned about. Because I feel that the investments that we have should have brought more money into the city. And that's why I say I don't think we should have lost our fire department. And frankly speaking, if that money was handled properly, we should be able to take care of our parks. But right now, what? We didn't even take care of our infrastructure. So, I've been saying since '09, where did the money go? I have some ideas, because I've checked on different things. I've been very involved for many years. Some of you people who don't understand, you haven't been involved for years. You don't know what's been going on. I can understand that. But you're not willing to try and find out for yourselves. And that's all I'm asking, is you to look and find out for yourselves also. Because you're the ones that have to determine how the money is spent. You're the ones that are gonna get it in the neck if you don't spend it properly and get us out of this mess. I don't want to see our city lost. That's why I fight so hard for it. That's why I fight so hard for it. Because I happen to like Inglewood, and I think we have a great opportunity here of being what we once were, which was a thriving little town. I don't want us to see, lose our, what we have as a small community. We're only seven square miles. That's not very big. But anyway, that's what I wanted to talk to you about. The audit is very important, because there has been misuse of money, and we need to find out how much and who got it. That's all I'm asking. And that is your job. I don't think it's too much to ask you to do that. So just be careful how that wording is. I'm not happy with that wording on that audit. And by the way, the audit should be done for us, not you asking them to do certain things or give them questions. You're not doing an interview. You're doing an audit of finances. And that has to be done properly. And I agree with somebody outside of the area, somebody who specialized in doing this type of thing, because it is a job, and it should be done from day one. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Holtz. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Martin Frazier, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding ADUs.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem, nice to see you again.
Good to see you, too.
I'm here again, basically addressing the accessory dwelling units. So, let me go ahead and go here. By restricting accessory dwelling units to... Sorry, go ahead. Sorry about that. By restricting accessory dwelling units to only MUR 3-B and MUR 3-A, council has basically killed the idea of allowing ADUs in Inglewood. MUR 3-B and MUR 3-A are basically all areas where apartments are currently located in the city. It doesn't make any sense to only allow in these areas. Following the idea of highest and best use, why would anyone limit themselves to only building a 650-square-foot ADU unit when they can build an apartment with multiple units with more square feet? Although it's a good start in these zoned areas, it falls short of the potential for ADUs. Chances on any ADU being built in this zoning are almost nonexistent. However, this may have been the intent of council to try to eliminate ADUs altogether. With popular support of the Inglewood people, community development has been working on a comprehensive plan since 2014 to bring council a detailed plan for ADUs, consideration to building requirements, parking issues, infrastructure issues, and zoning requirements that make sense. Looking at the zoning map, the very best zoning for ADUs would be R1C. Why R1C? R1C has a 50-by-125 lot, alley access, and sewer running toward the alley. And most of the, one of the things on the ADUs, an ADU must be in the 35% back area of the property. So, R2B and R2A are also ideal for a homeowner to construct an ADU. But following the highest and best use argument, one could only, one could also put a duplex in these lots. R1C is the key to ADUs in Inglewood, and zoning should not be limited to just MUR 3-B and MUR 3-A. It should be allowed in R1C, R2B, and R2A. The restrictive amendment from the first read should be reversed. City attorney is a possible reverse amendment on the second read. Passage of CB2, passage, excuse me, passage of CB2 with allowing all original zoning would add an increased market value to every Inglewood resident of $50,000. And no vote could cost every resident $50,000. An actual ADU, if an actual ADU is constructed on your lot, the owner could see an increase in $100,000, $150,000 in market value of your property. Keep in mind, market value is not the same as taxable value. Taxable value would only occur, yeah, excuse me, taxable value would only occur if an actual ADU was built. Who would not like that $50,000 with just one vote? In conclusion, I recommend the council table will vote on CB2 until such time as to have full attendance of all council members, and at that time, council then reconsider all original zonings that was allowed with original staff recommendations, and come back and pass CB2. If council votes to kill CB2 tonight, it will be back because it's popular support for this, and it will be back again in front of council. Maybe not this council, but in time down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I appreciate it. I appreciate you speaking at the last meeting as well. You used the $50,000 value on this vote, so using the zoning districts that you pointed out to us. Do you believe that if we pass this, that would just immediately tack on $50,000 worth of value to each property within those zones?
The value is a market value.
Sure.
It was subjective. Okay? So, I mean, it could be, of course, it all depends on the lot, where it's at location as well. But it could, $50,000 is, could be a conservative figure.
Very good.
It's very popular. One other thing, too, you said why not R1A and R1B at the last, at the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
There's really not, there's no alleys in those. So it's very difficult to put a unit behind the property without alley access. So that's kind of why, I like it and all, but hey, you gotta get what you can get. So.
Great.
Yep.
Thanks again, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
And there's another question. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for coming tonight. You are a property owner in Inglewood. What zone district is your property in?
R1C. I'm in R1C, which I'm in Councilmember Berentine's area. She said it allows council meeting that no one in her district wants it. Well, I do want it, just so you know. And it would work in the neighborhood. I had Mayor Protem over. I showed her the whole area. She still's not, she's not for it, but that's okay. I respect her, you know, telling me the truth. So, good?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Frazier. Our next speaker this evening is Steve Muth, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding ADUs. Good evening, Mr. Muth.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Stephen Muth. I'm homeowner at 2880 South Lincoln Street. I'm going to be basically begging the council members to look into the facts that I've researched about ADUs and hopefully approve ADUs in the area. I was going to write a big speech with all the little details, but I thought I'd just come up and tell it how it is and what I've researched from heart and tell you my specific story. Basically, a couple of years ago, my son became sick, and we needed additional space. We looked into building on an ADU in Inglewood. I had plans drafted, spent about $7,000. My architect said we were zoned R2, where everything was good. Until later, about two months ago, we found out that we had a few different problems. ADUs, of course, were not eligible for the R2 zone, number one, but we also later found out that we have a 37-foot lot, which is not considered a small lot. It's an urban lot. And after a few different discussions with zoning, they felt this was a severe discrepancy in the zoning laws. Well, due to how they split up the lots, there's a substantial number of left-out people that own urban lots that aren't, you know, basically allowed to have any rights. And that's what I'm here to plead with the council members for. To tell you, after listening to everyone here, I think revenue, of course, is always important. It's my opinion that, and after doing research on adding an ADU to my property, the appraised value would increase by about $150,000. So that's a substantial improvement to the area. Another substantial thing besides that, it gives me the ability to have room for my son. However, in the situation that I have now, I only have one choice if ADUs are not approved. My choice, because I need the room and the space, is to build a storage unit. After consulting with numerous residents in the area and neighbors, it's their opinion that a storage would decrease the property value substantially. What I could do without any argument with the planning department or permitting department, I can build a flat roof at 16 feet high and build a storage unit and park old Jelopses in back there. And it's my opinion that the way the city of Inglewood is growing for the better right now, and I do see it in the new developments in the town, it would be devastating to allow, because there's a discrepancy in the law, people to decrease the property value by turning the city of Inglewood into a more industrial area where they can have storage units over enhancing the property value of an actual ADU, which would have windows and be a beautiful location that would mimic the size of the roof and be the apparent same quality of manufacturing as the house itself, and mimic the old look of what I want to obtain instead of some flat, ugly roof with a bunch of storage and no windows back there and a bunch of trash out in the back. So, my beg is to please research this and consider approving ADUs in all the areas, the R2. I agree with the last speaker that it should be approved in all the different zoning areas. Another thing is please identify that urban lots should be part of the small lot and talk to your zoning and your planning department how they, how strongly they believe that a lot, that my lot, only two feet off from a small lot, is encumbered on even applying for a variance. So my neighbors do not even have the say.
Mr. Muth.
In a variance.
Oh, okay. There are some questions for you. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thanks for being here, Mr. Muth, and for sharing those points with us.
Thank you.
Are you aware of any other lot type other than the urban that you spoke of tonight that might even be, might also be excluded from?
I didn't research that specific.
Okay.
I know there is some other lot type, but I think it's substantially smaller than an urban unit.
Okay.
When I talked to zoning, they had talked about why there are so many urban lots, is there were a 50 lot, they were a 50-feet setback, and somehow they cut it up, and there's a substantial number of 37-foot lots like mine.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Muth, and sharing your perspective with us.
Thank you.
Did you mention in your statements which zone district you are currently in?
I'm in O'Fanuel's District. I believe it's 2.
1.
I mean, which zone district? Are you R2, R1C?
Oh, I believe it's R2.
Okay.
I believe.
R2A, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, there is another question. Councilmember Questa.
Can you give me your address one more time, sir?
It's 2880 South Lincoln Street.
Thank you, Mr. Muth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council members, and Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Muth. Our next speaker this evening is Zach Muth.
I apologize, Zach. Muth is my son. They was going to speak on behalf of him, you know, moving and that, but he's sick tonight, so I apologize that he could not make it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
One of the main reasons for this.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Pamela Beetz, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding growth in her neighborhood. Good evening, Ms. Beetz.
Good evening, I'm in council. I'm Pamela Beetz at 3224 South Delaware Street. I moved to Inglewood, which I think a lot of you have heard me talk about, because I loved the area and I loved the homes. And I'm really concerned about seeing some of these beautiful, older homes scraped off and lost. An acquaintance of mine had a 1926 house on Logan Street with the original chandeliers, woodwork, hand-done plaster. It's now a cement block. You probably drive by it. I look at my house and all the original 1946 hand plaster, the cove ceilings, the mahogany doors, the red oak floors, and, you know, my friends and family drive by on Dartmouth and say, what is that monstrosity on the corner? And I've heard comments like that frequently. I've heard comments such as, doesn't Inglewood have any architectural standards? Do they have any standards? And one of the reasons I moved into this neighborhood, or this area, is because when I moved in, Inglewood did have standards. If a house was torn down or remodeled, it did have to meet the neighboring homes. You couldn't put a three-story row house in the middle of a block of one-story bungalows. And I think Inglewood has more potential than being crowded. I have yet to go to any council meeting in the last 10 or 15 years that I've ever attended when someone said, let's have more density, let's get more crowded, let's have more parking problems. We've all talked about, we want more open space. And I think space is the thing that will actually bring Inglewood more value. And, you know, I looked up a concept in Buddhism that's called creating value. And what that is, it's what's important to people, what things and conditions enhance our experience of living. So Inglewood can have ADUs, and I'm not unsympathetic to why some people want them. But I also know, I get five or six flyers or mailers a day offering to buy my property, and that's probably because of development. And I believe development is more like gambling with our neighborhoods. People have invested 80 years of their life here. I've been here 20 years. And to see these beautiful neighborhoods, these beautiful homes disappear so someone can build a mega mansion on my block or put up a series of apartment complexes essentially in the backyards disturbs me greatly. That space, as, you know, Denver residents, you know, finally forced their city council to stop that kind of development. I believe that we have sustainably, both economically and environmentally, we have sustainable homes, we have a sustainable area, and space is actually going to be the new value. Because we are, in Inglewood, we are so poised with these lovely homes, manageable backyards and front yards, that as things get more crowded, we are going to look better and better. And I truly believe that. I do not buy into this urban density, more is better, argument, because I think it's false. I think it's for people who want to speculate. And I also think that the city council has a moral obligation to protect and preserve these neighborhoods and the residents that have put their life, their kids, their finances, their businesses here. And it's up to you. And I believe you have that obligation to preserve these homes, preserve my home, preserve my next-door neighbor's home. If I wanted to live next to the three-story fourplex that just got built next to me and look in their windows, I would have moved someplace else. Because I can do that really easily in Grant Ranch, or Highlands Ranch, or Sterling Ranch, or Parker, or Castle Rock. All those, you can, the houses are so close together, you can literally, if they're three or four feet, you can look in their windows. So I'm asking you to preserve our neighborhoods. And I would like to change topics and add something else, since it was spoken about this evening. The issue of more marijuana in Inglewood, I'm also against that. But I want to tell you my personal experience. I'm on four asthma medications. I'm going on a fifth. My prescription medication cost is over $3,000 a month. My allergist told me the oil and marijuana is so pervasive in the city of Denver from the growhouses, residential, people growing and using residentially, and just dispensaries, it's so pervasive. He called it pervasive, toxic, and virulent. And that's what's happened to me since marijuana's been legalized. And I think you're directly responsible for my health as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beetz. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Doug Cohn, 3051 South Marion Street. We're going to make a proclamation tonight about the Bill of Rights, celebrating its 197th anniversary. I got to thinking about that, rights versus laws. Rights versus laws. The Declaration of Independence declares that each man has natural rights that emanate from God. Natural rights are declared in the Declaration of Independence to be unalienable, meaning that these rights cannot be separated from the individual. The Bill of Rights, not a bill of laws, not a bill of suggestions, not a bill of hopes. The Bill of Rights details what human beings have rights to, and every one of them limits what the government can do to people. The United States Code calls them organic law, which means they cannot be taken away by man. These laws are natural. Rules do not exist just because a politician or a president decrees it. The Constitution was finished and ratification began in 1789. There were two opposing groups of people with thoughts on how much power the new national government should have. There were the Federalists, who wanted a very strong central government, and the Anti-Federalists, who wanted the power with the states and the local governments. And they believed the central government should have very limited and enumerated powers. After quite a discussion, shall I call it a serious argument? The two sides agreed on a Bill of Rights that would apply to every person equally. These rights were not bestowed on us by the government. The two sides acknowledged that their rights were God-given and exist independently from any set of laws. On the back of the paper, I was going to read a few of these. Amendment number one. Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redressed grievances. Number two. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Number three. No soldier shall, in time of peace, be quartered in any house without the consent of the owner or in time of war, but in the manner prescribed by law. Number four. The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Number five. No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise heinous, infamous crime unless on a presentment or indictment of a grand jury, excepting cases arising in the land or naval forces or in the militia, when in actual service in time of war or public danger. Nor shall any person be subject to the same offense to be twice put in jeopardy of life or limb. Nor shall be compelled in any criminal case to be a witness against himself, nor to be deprived of life, liberty, and property without the due process of law. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. Number six. In all criminal prosecutions, the accused shall enjoy the right to a speedy and public trial by impartial jury of the state and the district wherein the crime shall have been committed, which district shall have been previously ascertained by law and informed of the nature and the cause of the accusation, to be confronted with a witness against him, to have compulsory process for obtaining witnesses in his favor, and to have the assistance of counsel. I'm running out of time.
You can go ahead and read a couple more and then-
In suits of common law, where there is a controversy that shall exceed $20, the right to a trial by jury shall be preserved, and no fact tried by a jury shall be otherwise reexamined by any court in the United States than according to the rules of common law. Number eight. Excessive bail shall not be required, nor excessive fines imposed, nor cruel or unusual punishments inflicted. The enumerations of the Constitution and certain rights shall be construed, shall not be construed, to deny or disparage others retained by the people. The last one. The power is not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited by it to the states, or reserved to the states respectively, and to the people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohn, for that reminder, and it's very timely.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cohn? Seeing none, we'll have comment shortly. Thank you. Now we're moving on to agenda item seven, unscheduled public comment. Our first speaker this evening is Jave Dean. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council. Here today, we had an unfortunate tragedy at my residence at 4898 South Lincoln Street. On the 27th of November, my nephew passed away in our bathroom. And I called 911 at 11:15 in the morning, and I did not get any emergency services until 11:35. He was passed out and gone for about 25 minutes before I had any time to get help or receive any help. And once they did show up, there was no help. It was too late. And I'd like to just make sure that everybody knows that we need better emergency services around here. I figured that when we met with, merged with Denver, we could be better and bigger, more services, faster. That's not the case. I think we need to get our old Inglewood back. Inglewood was better when it was not Denver. And I don't think that the people of Denver care that much about the city of Inglewood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Dean? There's a couple of questions, Mr. Dean, if you would come back. Councilmember Questa.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dean. I appreciate you taking this to council here. And any loss of life in the city is irreplaceable and tragic. Can you please repeat the date for me?
11/27.
Thank you, sir. And the address one more time, sir?
4898 South Lincoln Street.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us. I'm really sorry to hear about the loss of your fellow member. And you, you said you placed a call. Did you call 911?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then you said you called around 11, and they came about 30 minutes later, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. As we've said before or previously, I'm sorry for your loss, and thanks for coming to share this information with us. What time of the night?
It was during-
I know it was November 27.
11:15 a.m.
Oh, it was in the morning. Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Berentine.
Actually, that's what I was going to ask, whether it was a.m. or p.m. I am so sorry for your loss. And I'm sure that we will get some council request on this to get a little bit more When you contacted them, did you, were you on with dispatch, and did dispatch stay with you?
No, dispatch did not. They hung up.
Was there any information or guidance for you to do any kind of service at the time?
Oh, ma'am. We flagged down a police officer just happened to be driving by our house.
Thank you very much for coming and letting us know.
And then I have a question also. I, too, I'm very sorry for your loss. So you were able to flag down a police officer. Did the police officer finally get the help that you needed?
Not really. He was there way before any of the emergency services. I chainsawed my own door down with a crowbar and tote.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. All right. Our next speaker this evening is Janelle Dean, also here to speak about emergency services.
Hi, my name's Janelle Dean. I've lived here my whole life. There's been six generations in Inglewood. Inglewood is made of pride, respect, integrity, dependability, efficiency, and ethics. That wasn't shown this past week. It seemed that we lack all the above. My nephew died in my bathroom. As my husband previously stated, he saw down my bathroom door and ripped it open. I chased down that officer. He just patrolled by. First phone call was to 911. And he was transferred to Inglewood. Dispatcher did not stay on the phone to do CPR. The officer did not even try. I know from experience, being in the medical services, all emergency service people are to have stuff to perform. I asked the officer to help us perform CPR. He said no. Angel, the coroner, an advocate from Inglewood, stated to us, his mother could see him when she got into town. They stated no. Unprofessional, unethical, and demoralizing to Inglewood. That's not Inglewood. Also, fireman statements were said that Inglewood wouldn't have never said. It was stated that was the most messiest one I've ever seen. When you die, you all lose all bodily functions. We have a fire station two and a half blocks. Why 25 minutes? It wasn't planned. Why did this happen, 25 minutes? Which brings me back to a gentleman who was stabbed in front of our house. We had the exact same problem. Officer made another statement. This man is drunk. No, that man was not. He was stabbed. This isn't Inglewood. This isn't Inglewood. I've lived here for almost 50 years. This isn't Inglewood. Enough is enough. I know how to dispatch. I have an associate's degree in applied science. That officer wouldn't even touch my nephew. I will volunteer my time.
I am so sorry, Mrs. Dean, and I-
They wouldn't even let him see my nephew.
We will have some council requests, and we will be looking into this, and there will be some answers coming forward. And we will make certain of it. I just cannot express how sorry I am. I know that's very weak for what you've gone through, and I apologize. I am so sorry.
Sorry won't bring him back.
I know. Can we take a five-minute recess?
It's like I told you. You've been coming, I tried. You've been coming and I try.
Mayor Protem, I just text you that number to you so that you've got it.
Yes. Well, no, that's not the end. We still have some more. So, all right, just a second. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Our next unscheduled public speaker is Steve Yates, coming to speak about public comment. Good evening, Mr. Yates.
Good evening. My address is 3200 South Broad- South Broadway, my goodness sakes. 3200 South Corona. My name is Steve Yates. I'd like to talk about public comment. First of all, I want to thank council for serving our community. I know you're not paid a whole heck of a lot to do this and at times it can take quite a bit of your time. In some cases, the service comes at a very real price to our careers and our businesses. And I can honestly say it does affect your personal life, serving on council. So, I just want to express my appreciation and hopefully the rest of the audience can show some sort of appreciation for your services to the community. In America, we are blessed with a government that respects everyone's right for free speech and has made a very important and has made it a very important part of our constitution. We, the people, also understand we don't have the right to say anything we want, everything we want, whenever we want, and anywhere we want. We all understand you can't yell "fire" in a crowded theater or walk into somebody's home and say whatever you want without consequences. The public also may not be aware of this. There is no law stating public comment has to be allowed during council meetings. Public comment is a privilege, not a right, of the people during these council meetings. Council has a right to conduct business, meetings any way they want as long as they conform to the charter, the constitution, and the sunshine laws. I'm not advocating getting rid of public comment, but we do need to manage it a little bit better. In fact, Littleton, and I believe it's also Cherry Hills, it might be Greenwood Village, they're in the process of changing the rules of public comment. Because they're having the same problems as we are, some members of the public have felt it is acceptable to swear, make false allegations, and go on personal attacks against council members and staff. I can see the need for Inglewood to make modifications to public comment and it could take many different forms. It could be limiting if- it could be limiting public comment to pertinent issues that the council's talking about for the agenda. They could say, hey, you know, if your comments are not about these agenda items, you have less time if you're going to talk early. Or you could have a public comment at the end of the session, and I'll get right off, at the end of the session, for everybody that wants to make comments that has nothing to do with the night's agenda. We need to clean this up and I'm in the red. So, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Robert Reagan, here to speak about more building. Good evening, Mr. Reagan.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here and thank you for your work and support. Anytime I need to reach out, I'm always able to get ahold of Rita, Linda, and Othaniel. If not that day, I get called back pretty quickly. I'm in the preservation overlay at the 3400 block of South Grant. And as a group, years ago, we all got together and we're able to make our preservation as it is. As far as I can tell, it's Inglewood's oldest block. My house and the two next to me, from what I researched, were built by German masons who built a lot of the brick homes in town. I personally love where I live, the location, and we do have multi-use on it already. We have a duplex there and we have an apartment building and we have special apartment parking also. Today, the police, we had to take away them from their time. There were three cars that were parked without parking stickers on the block. We get that a decent amount of times. We don't feel like calling the police all the time on it because we know they have other stuff to do. Another issue that's been coming up around the block too is people actually sleeping in their cars twice in front of my house. I had to ask them to leave. Most recently, the car that got ticketed today is a pickup truck with a wife, I believe a husband, a small child, and two dogs. They park there and walk and I don't know what they do. I've seen them all over town besides being in their truck. But there are questions about, our concerns about being able to build ADUs in other areas. And I understand those concerns, but in our area, by all the homeowners, we're all in favor of keeping it the way it is. We like it the way it is. My neighbor bought his house and he was very happy with it. He was told by the previous owner who had owned it for many, many years, my neighbor, that the overlay that we had and the preservation, which we love, any ADU would be limited to 650 square feet, but it would fit fine into the area because it's an old neighborhood and we really don't have rooms in the alleys far that anyways if it was going to happen. We have everyone on the block. I can't speak for people who own and rent their places, but some who I've talked to are definitely in favor of keeping it the way it is and has been. We, years ago, had to have lots of meetings at the O'Malley Center and other areas and it was a great effort, community-wise.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I actually have a question. So, you are in the neighborhood overlay district, so it is included in the current area that has been approved for ADUs?
Yeah, right now, they- and it has been that way. And there's 650 square foot ones that can resemble the area. I would personally have a great place to do it, but I wouldn't. It's not what I would want to do. I mean, I have a house in a garage. I have a really old garage and I think that looks much better than an ADU personally, but we didn't- we understood that there were concessions made. There's not more apartment buildings. There's not a gas station on our block and stuff like that. But, yeah, right now, they're able to do that.
Okay. So, are you concerned about that?
I always have had concerns about ADUs, for sure. More traffic, more people. Right now, we have a house on the block that sold. My friend Jeremy sold it. It's to the north of the apartment building and we believe it's an Airbnb because there's people in there two or three times. Not disruptive by any means whatsoever with anything, actually. But as far as any growth like that, I'm not particularly fond of it, but I understand where somebody may have an older parent or a child that may need a place to live.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming forward.
You're welcome. Thank you all very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Cian Dickerson. Good evening, Ms. Dickerson.
Hi. Coleen Dickerson, also known as Cian Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street. Those who do not know the past mistakes and refuse to learn or acknowledge those mistakes of the past are dooming us all to the repetition, especially regarding the decorum of now ex-council members. One of whom threw a phone across the table in response to a question at a public meeting. And that same ex-council member slandered, attacked, and lied about private citizens from the dais and not because of public comments. But I'm going to talk about Eave right now, regarding the history of Eave. Despite what we have been told that Eave is a private corporation and/or a 501(c)(3), that is not true, nor has it ever been true. The legal firm which set up Eave told the IRS that Eave was an integral part of the city of Inglewood. Our budgets claim it is a separate legal entity, but it is obvious from various sources, including those budgets, that it is not separate. Much of the accounting consists of journal entries within the books of the city of Inglewood, which is only appropriate when a department or subdivision of the city has internal allocations. Employees of the city or the board of directors, nullifying the concept of separate, private legal entity. The MOA lease is a joint lease equating Eave and the city of Inglewood as Inglewood, and it's called a government agreement. Additionally, the MOA lease is a violation of the Tabor Amendment in that it is four, five-year options binding future councils. Only a one-year lease is allowed under Tabor. The joint lease is confusing and possibly illegal if Eave is a separate legal entity. The lease itself is not subject to renewal after May 31, 2020, 1.5 years from now. The MOA lease cannot be extended for three years and should not be, especially not under the terms extent, and not with EEF. A simple solution is to do a forensic audit to determine where all the offsets are, including the almost $19 million of bonds in the irrevocable trust established in 2005 for the purpose of debt service and saleable at par as of 2017, and the exact properties remaining in their value. Once we know where the funds are, use the funds which should be in excess of the debt of the cop, pay it off, and then dissolve Eave. I'm reminded of an old ad. Where's the beef? Where are millions? I can't even find the $18 million trust fund that should be on the Eave balance sheet. Is it on the city's balance sheet? How's that for proposing a solution?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Dickerson? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Cynthia Sirphos. Good evening, Ms. Sirphos.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the council members for their discussions on the ADUs in the last reading. Specifically, I want to thank Councilmember Rink for reading in Maureen White's comments about the use of ADUs for the elderly, since Maureen had extensive experience of that with her aunt. I also wanted to say that maybe we in Inglewood need to explore several issues regarding our residential areas and the value of our residential areas to the community of Inglewood because we are quickly becoming an intercity transit bedroom community and not a standalone community. And I think that we're losing our value as a standalone community. And I think that Councilmember Questa alluded to this when he opened up a little bit about the topic of value of sunlight shedding on your property and the loss of that with building on your ADUs. A neighbor of mine experienced a 50% increase in the cost of his heating for his house when the property to the south of him was scraped and a massive new house was built. And that's just one incidence of loss of sunshed on your property. So, there are a lot of issues regarding the loss of residential Inglewood that we are not even conscious of or haven't even observed that are happening quickly. And I think Ms. Beetz alluded to them. And separate issues such as short-term rentals and ADUs and parking and crowding and these things only begin to identify the tip of the iceberg that is the loss of the community of Inglewood. I also want to say again, I do support not putting ADUs in R1(c). And I also commend removing the corporate language from the ADU amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Sirphos? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Becky Deal with another part of her story. Good evening, Ms. Deal.
Good evening. Yeah, another part of my story. At the last council meeting on November 19, Mr. Cohen got me thinking about when he said we should all think about things we were thankful for and maybe write them down. So, here's just a few of my things that I was thankful for during our time of need. I'm thankful for a husband who was smart enough to throw the main electrical breaker in our house and shut off the gas when we were being flooded. I'm thankful for the two drains that were in my house that helped keep the level to only eight inches inside. I'm thankful for enough towels, blankets, and comforters that I got to stuff in front of my doors, cover my heater vents to help keep the water from flooded, from coming in. I remind you, I have no basement and no crawl space. I'm thankful that only the bottom half of my clothes in my closet and only the bottom drawers in my dressers got flood soaked. I'm thankful that I have two daughters that have working washers and dryers that helped me launder those flood soaked items. I'm thankful for our neighbor who called professionals to drain the water out of his flood, flooded basement. When they were draining the water out of his basements, those pros came over and sucked out most of the water that was in my carpet and in my house. I'm thankful for a strong husband and a strong son-in-law who cut the carpet in manageable pieces and were able to carry them out in the front yard. I'm thankful for another son-in-law who is a licensed HVAC who came over and got the water out of the ducts and got my three-year-old heater up and running again. I'm thankful for that same son-in-law who is also a licensed electrician who checked each and every one of my outlets in my house and in my garage. I'm thankful for my husband again for the knowledge and the know-how to bring back the old, the older cars we restore and were restoring that were in our garage, and he was able to do the work himself. I'm thankful for my neighbor who lent me a power washer. Who, when we were using that power washer outside the house, the patio, the furniture, the lawn equipment, toys, inside garage, driveway, sidewalks, fences, everywhere out front. I'm thankful for my grandson, who I have custody of, who had a place to stay for three and a half weeks while we cleaned and sanitized everything in our home because it wasn't safe for him to be there. When he did come home, we had no living room furniture, no carpet yet, and all the baseboards were still off in the house. But he had to come home because school was starting. I'm thankful for that one neighbor that was understanding enough to let the one of two of our fences that were knocked down by the floodwater to lay in their yard until we had time to get to that. I'm thankful for my husband and I, who are knowledgeable and healthy enough and young enough to be able to do what we did. I'm thankful for the one council member who personally came to my house more than once to see the devastation of our home and property and helped out our end of the street who were affected. That one council member who still checks in with me today. You know who you are, and I just want to say thank you for caring enough to still think about me and my family in this time. I am especially thankful for all my family, including my pets, that made it through the flood with our lives. We were hit harder than most, but not near as hard as some. Now, some people might be thinking I'm sarcastic. I'm not. I'm thankful for those little items that got me through a hard time. It was those little things that got me through the flood devastation that brought us, that was brought upon us. Sorry, I went over a little.
Thank you, Ms. Deal. Any questions? Thank you very much for coming. Our next speaker this evening is Linda Hart.
And separate issues such as short-term rentals and ADUs and parking and crowding and these things only begin to identify the tip of the iceberg that is the loss of the community of Inglewood. I also want to say again, I do support not putting ADUs in R1(c), and I also commend removing the corporate language from the ADU amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Sirphos? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Becky Deal with another part of her story. Good evening, Ms. Deal.
Good evening. Yeah, another part of my story. At the last council meeting on November 19th, Mr. Cohen got me thinking about when he said we should all think about things we were thankful for and maybe write them down. So here's just a few of my things that I was thankful for during our time of need. I'm thankful for a husband who is smart enough to throw the main electrical breaker in our house and shut off the gas when we were being flooded. I'm thankful for the two drains that were in my house that helped keep the level to only eight inches inside. I'm thankful for enough towels, blankets, and comforters that I got to stuff in front of my doors, cover my heater vents to help keep the water from flooding, from coming in. I remind you, I have no basement and no crawl space. I'm thankful that only the bottom half of my clothes in my closet and only the bottom drawers of my dressers got flood-soaked. I'm thankful that I have two daughters that have working washers and dryers that helped me launder those flood-soaked items. I'm thankful for our neighbor who called professionals to drain the water out of his flood, flooded basement. When they were draining the water out of his basements, those pros came over and sucked out most of the water that was in my carpet and in my house. I'm thankful for a strong husband and a strong son-in-law who had cut the carpet in manageable pieces and were able to carry them out in the front yard. I'm thankful for another son-in-law who is a licensed HVAC who came over and got the water out of the ducts and got my three-year-old heater up and running again. I'm thankful for that same son-in-law who is also a licensed electrician who checked each and every one of my outlets in my house and in my garage. I'm thankful for my husband again for the knowledge and the know-how to bring back the old, the older cars we restore and were restoring that were in our garage, and he was able to do the work himself. I'm thankful for my neighbor who lent me a power washer. Who, when we were using that power washer outside the house, the patio, the furniture, the lawn equipment, toys, inside garage, driveway, sidewalks, fences, everywhere out front. I'm thankful for my grandson, who I have custody of, who had a place to stay for three and a half weeks while we cleaned and sanitized everything in our home because it wasn't safe for him to be there. When he did come home, we had no living room furniture, no carpet yet, and all the baseboards were still off in the house. But he had to come home because school was starting. I'm thankful for that one neighbor that was understanding enough to let the one of two of our fences that were knocked down by the floodwater to lay in their yard until we had time to get to that. I'm thankful for my husband and I, who are knowledgeable and healthy enough and young enough to be able to do what we did. I'm thankful for the one council member who personally came to my house more than once to see the devastation of our home and property and helped out our end of the street who were affected. That one council member who still checks in with me today. You know who you are, and I just want to say thank you for caring enough to still think about me and my family in this time. I am especially thankful for all my family, including my pets, that made it through the flood with our lives. We were hit harder than most, but not near as hard as some. Now, some people might be thinking I'm sarcastic. I'm not. I'm thankful for those little items that got me through a hard time. It was those little things that got me through the flood devastation that brought us, that was brought upon us. Sorry, I went over a little.
Thank you, Ms. Deal. Any questions? Thank you very much for coming. Our next speaker this evening is Linda Hart.
Good evening, Ms. Hart.
My name is Linda Hart. I live at 4352 South Pennsylvania Street. I don't have much to say tonight, but I did want to say that I am one that objects to having marijuana growing in Inglewood. I love this city. I've lived here for a long time, for altogether probably close to 30 years in this area and 23 in this house that I'm in now. I want to keep it the way it is. I don't like marijuana being sold in the city, but we don't, not a lot of choices there, but I would like to just say that. I do agree with the storm water fee increases. I hate to have any fees increased, but you guys have shown the need for it. You've done good research on it, and it needs to be done, so I appreciate all the effort you guys have put into that. The main thing I want to say tonight is, I want to say thank you to all of you on the city council for what you do. You get paid very little for it, and I have been involved in watching you for, over the years, the different groups that have come in, and it's not an easy job. None of the cities that have a city council have an easy job, but you guys especially have a hard one, and you don't get paid a lot for it. So I wanted to say thank you for that effort and what you do for the citizens of this city. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hart? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Joe Anderson. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Council. Thank you, Mayor Protem Russell. I remember when I came to my first Inglewood city council member several years ago, I sat here not knowing the backstory of the council members or the people who were getting up to speak. But one citizen got up and made a whole litany of accusations against some city employee, criminal nature. And I knew at that moment that there was some political game being played because the accusations were being brought to a public forum and not to the police stations. They had been used for some political end. And I thought at that moment, I know a way to figure out what's going on with each of these council members, to see where they stand. I waited until public comment to see what they were made of, how they responded to that, because I knew the right response, having been involved in a number of conflicts. And accusations are one of the best, and false accusations and accusations of any kind are one of the best and often most wicked ways of winning any conflict that you're in because people buy them even if they're not true. And you can make somebody look bad without having any truth on your side. And as the council members responded, everyone had their own take on it. But I remember the very last one, in her calm and gentle way, council member said, "We need to be very careful how we respond to these accusations because if they're true, they should be brought to the proper authorities and dealt with appropriately. If they're false, these accusations could unjustly destroy someone's life." It's that serious. That was now Mayor Linda Olson, then she was Councilmember Olson. And I had a lot of respect for her from that very first day for taking a stand for the truth, even when the accusations were enticing, to kind of jump in on. A while back, I came into this room and spoke a little bit about love and fear and how those two motivations motivate all of our actions. They lie behind everything that we do. I've seen a lot of accusations, many of them false, coming up in public comment here at city council meetings, and it's not good. I think we should return as citizens of this city to a place where we're coming in a spirit of love toward council, figuring out solutions to our problems rather than berating our council members. So I want to just call the city of Inglewood, the citizens of Inglewood, just back to a reminder that we live in the same community. We are aiming for the same ends. Let's, let's serve each other well and love and not come in here with accusations and berating and bringing fear-based conspiracy theories to try to tear people down. Let's end it. Let's bring it, let's bring it back to a place of love. So that's my, that's my encouragement to the city and to city council. Hang in there, and I'm so thankful for what you guys do, the time you put in, so I appreciate it. Also, I just want to throw in these last few seconds that I want to encourage you to put off this vote on the ADUs until you get a full council here. This is a big enough decision that everybody should be represented in the room on this. So let's, let's just hold off and make a decision on this when we have a full council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. There are none. Our next speaker this evening is Sean Herbert. Good evening, Mr. Herbert.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Protem. I'm Sean Herbert. I live at 3323 South Ogden Street, and fortunately, I bought in 2005, so I'm pretty happy with the property value. But my opportunity cost right now, I work in corporate America. I work for the fifth, depending on the year, the fifth-largest reinsurance company in the world, and I do client data management. When I'm out of the office, I have a backup person, and I asked that you postpone this vote on ADUs or vote for it because I don't feel like in District 2 that I've been adequately representative. And I want to thank you all for your time, and I think a lot has been said that you guys really, you know, have, probably have normal jobs and do this on the side, or maybe you retired. But in District 2, I go on the, well, first off, let me back up. I thought this ADU for RC1 had a lot of support. I went to a few open house meetings, three. I emailed John, the planner, one of the planners, and I just, I'm unfamiliar with the process, so I tried to familiarize myself with it. I filled out the questionnaire, you know, for it, and I thought it really has some support in RC1. But when I look at your zoning map of where it's currently approved for, that's kind of a joke to me because it's, there are mainly apartment buildings there. I know what west of me would be on Clarkson. I know east, and I guess southeast of me it would be where the Marx are, you know, maybe south of Romans Park. But I just feel like this really needs to be addressed when you have a full council, and I just don't feel like I'm adequately representative, representative, represented for the ADUs for RC1. My personal story is, I've got a three-bedroom house. My daughter's now in college and is, is out of the house. My opportunity cost is about almost $1,000 now where I could rent out my house, but I have nowhere to go. So I'm counting on you guys hopefully to postpone this vote on ADUs just to get more adequate representation because I just feel like I've been mowed over. And maybe not developers, but they're definitely not homeowners are being benefited by this on RC1. But I need the retirement income, and I wanted to build a small unit above my garage or connect it to. And if you looked at my property in the alley, a lot of people complain on Nextdoor about the alleys being too dark and whatnot, and I just see it as a win-win. I'm going to be able to be a landlord. I'm going to be a responsible landlord. I'm going to be right there. I'm going to have a distinction so I don't have to interface with them too much, hopefully. But I've got a rental on one side of me and a rental across the street by the same owner, and I wouldn't call him a slum landlord, but he certainly, certainly isn't there or around unless there's a problem or he's trying to re-lease the houses. So hopefully, by you postponing this or getting more information or approving it, I have a chance at my retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Actually, there is a question. Councilmember Questa?
Yes, sir. Pardon me. I missed your name in the introduction.
Sean Herbert.
Mr. Herbert.
Yes, S.E.A.N.
And if I'm understanding correctly, then you are in support of including RC1s?
Yeah, because I think that's, I'm RC1. And I talked to a developer this week, actually in my alley. He's building on a half lot, a really, what's his name? Toby, I believe, with Creekside Properties. And he said that the city itself is kind of supportive of ADUs. It's just some people on the council, and I'm not familiar with all the infighting. I try and stay out of politics. I just heard it on my news that you guys were inefficiently doing recalls and it was expensive and all that, but I'm on your side, too. I mean, it doesn't sound like a fun job. So I just hope that you take that in consideration for RC1. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Our next speaker this evening and last speaker is Sarah Harkness. She is coming to speak to us about communication. Good evening, Ms. Harkness.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sarah Harkness. I live at 163 East Dartmouth Ave. I came to speak to council two weeks ago about decorum. I feel like my message was pretty well received and heard by most. I left with the impression that many are ready to move forward in a much more productive and positive direction, and I, I do see that. This meeting has been more productive and a little more positive than it has been in a long time. City council meetings exist within the realm of limited public forum, which means there are some limits to free speech. Decorum's purpose is not to shut down some voices in favor of others. The purpose is to level the playing field. Decorum is an equalizer. When you take personalities out of the argument, all you're left is the issues. And you can really focus on things when you're, when you do away with all the personal stuff. And this can lead to more effective and efficient decision-making. It serves to open ears and minds because people are much more willing to listen and actually hear what you have to say. It also serves to open up mouths. People are more willing to speak if they don't think they're going to get attacked. I'm very much in favor of free speech, but we just need to understand that there are There was an interesting article that I came across on the National League of Cities website talking about the First Amendment. The article discussed the importance of setting rules such as Bob's Rules of Order while at the same time respecting people's rights to speak. Here's a quote that really resonated with me in what's happening in our community. Angry emotions and disruptive actions can have the effect of hijacking a meeting, and sometimes that's what protesters at public meetings want. It means, though, that those same protesters are stealing from the public. They're preventing our, our officials from doing the work they're elected to do. There are 34,000 people living in Inglewood. Council's role is to represent and do what's best, what's in the best interest for Inglewood as a whole. I'm just going to end with another quote from human rights activist Desmond Tutu. "My father used to say, 'Don't raise your voice. Improve your argument.' Good sense does not always lie with the loudest shouters, nor can we say that a large unruly crowd is always the best arbitrator of what is right." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Harkness? Seeing none, thank you very much this evening. And so we will move into a response to public comment. Would someone like to begin? Okay, I would be happy to begin. I just want to thank you all for coming out this evening. I do thank you for the tenor in addressing council. I'm very thankful for Ms. Gonzalez coming to address Inglewood parks and that she's working within the system. I know that they want a ballot initiative, but I know they want to do it wisely, so I appreciate the work they're doing. I thank Kathleen Bailey, Ms. Hart, and I believe Pamela Beetz also in speaking about the marijuana issue and the health effects that it has. All of you who have come out regarding ADUs, I appreciate your thoughts. It seems like this has been going on for a long time, and we will be talking about that again this evening. And let's see. Appreciate the input on EEF and the certificates of participation by Ms. Holtz and, and Ms. Dickerson. And then back to Ms. Beetz and, and Ms. Sirphos also speaking about the residential value, value of the city of Inglewood. I have been here for a long time myself, and I do believe Inglewood is becoming something that we haven't intended for it to do, and I'm hopeful that this council, I know that when I first ran three years ago, well, that's not the first time I ran, but when I got on council three years ago, the number one concern was high density. And I do believe that we're beginning to see the fruit of that starting to come to pass. And I do agree that we do need to address, the design standards is also a great idea. Becky, I want to thank you also for your reminder to be thankful and how we can even be thankful in the midst of tragedy and things like that are, that are going on. I appreciate the encouragement for council and, and this council also, I mean, Decorum has come up by a few speakers also. This council will be talking about Decorum in a couple, no, I think it's actually next week, Decorum is on the agenda. So we'll, we'll be talking about that and dealing with that more. So I greatly appreciate you all coming out this evening to share with us. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We had so many speakers tonight. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your time with us. I won't address every single comment. Mayor Protem addressed several of them. I want to thank Emily Gonzalez for coming forward and being proactive on finding solutions to our parks. It means a lot to a lot of people, so looking, being proactive and working in, with the process and the departments where it makes sense, I think I appreciate that. To the folks that thanked council for our work, we really appreciate you, you taking the time to say thank you. We do have full-time jobs and families outside of here, and it does take a toll, and it takes a lot of mental energy and time and, but we're not in it for the money. I don't think we need raises. I would be fine even making less. You know, we don't want people to run for this position for the money, so I'm fine keeping it low. To me, that makes sense. It's, it's, it's not about the money at all. But thank you to those folks who recognize that. Thanks to everyone who came up for the ADUs. We'll be touching on it a little bit later. And a lot of the other issues that were brought up were related to personal, personal property issues and individual property rights. These topics are always really important and always just that, individual. And so we need to keep in mind that what I want, I also need to preserve the rights and protections for my neighbor, even if we don't agree with what those, how we might use those personal property decisions. So we just need to make decisions that are fair for everybody, and that's difficult to do. So I'm glad you all are engaged in, in sharing with us on that. To the Dean family, again, so sorry for the loss in your family. I would like to see if we can do a council request to kind of find out maybe what would have happened with that call to be so delayed. And thank you to Mr. Beetz for the suggestions on more efficient meetings and possible solutions for handling public comment in different ways. You know, we don't always get a lot of public comments, but tonight we have, and that's really great. It's almost nine o'clock, and we haven't started our business meeting, so it shows how much engagement we have. So it's always interesting to think about different ways to manage that. And thanks to all the folks that came to talk about the decorum and respect. I think it has improved a little bit, so I'm, I'm really glad to see that. We're all part of this, and we're all in this community together, and we're all responsible for making it better and treating each other in respectful manners to come up with solutions that work for everybody. So it's up to all of us, so let's do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine.
I appreciate the information on the dispensary that I think Pamela Beetz brought up. And so I will try to get some additional information on whether just the carbon filters or if there really is anything that's medically coming from any of the dispensaries that's going into the community. That, of course, would be of interest to us, and if there's a way to mitigate it for the places we already have, if that does exist. But that's the first time that I had heard of that, at least from the dispensaries, and wanted to get some additional information. And I will try to look into that. Anything that I get, I'll certainly share with the rest of council as well, in looking at some of these issues. The second is, I do agree with the speaker on the ADUs when we're talking about the highest and best use, but the highest and best use is different to different people. And I appreciate as a constituent in my district, that you may not be happy with what I've taken away from this, but after, there's a lot of people that believe their highest and best use is in keeping it as a single family. and best use is in keeping it as a single-family community. There is a concern when we had the 180 units that came in after the war. It was understandable. You had people that were strapped, that were wanting to go ahead and keep families together, similar situations, but there were also reasons that they stopped it, that they didn't want that to be what was in this community, and we need to make sure that we're not making the same mistake. I certainly am a proponent of trying to do this in a little bit of stages and going in with a little bit more caution and opening it up to the single-family residences of a concern to a lot of your neighbors and the that have not been quiet in telling me that they would prefer not to have it in the R1C area, especially what District III is made of. But I do appreciate you coming and speaking and letting us know how you feel about it. I have a lot of people who have talked a lot to the city and really thought, as they came into the city and invested in the city, that they were going to be able to do this. And we're already having pushback now on 37-foot lots and obviously concerns from some people who believe that they were exempt from it, so we have a lot more discussion we have to have on this, see where we go. I'm thankful that you used Doug's suggestion for a thankful list. That is important, especially this time of year. We had the flood, and now we have this, the other issue, and it is the season for some peace, joy, and tolerance and trying to all do the best job we can. I take what I do here very seriously, and I listen to people. I don't always agree with them, but I do the very best I can and will try my hardest to do the best job I can for the community. It just isn't always going to be what everybody wants, but I appreciate that you brought such a tragic situation and made us all very aware that you can still be thankful, and that touched me very deeply. I would like to do a council request as well on the fire and police response. I am a little concerned about the comments that there was some refusal to provide aid and exactly what that looked like. I'm also concerned that our dispatch did not stay on with them, if that's the case. Not that I doubt anything that they're saying, but those things, situations, can be very traumatic and very hard to be dealing with at the time, and so we need to be thoughtful in the process that we do. So, if there are things we are doing, and there's things we do very well, but if there's something that we're doing and things are slipping through the cracks and we need to shore it up and make sure that we do a better job. And as to the idea that it is a privilege to come and speak to this council, it is my privilege to listen to you. It is your right to be heard. It is part of what Doug read earlier, and that is that you have the right to redress your grievances to your government. That is why every single meeting that you will ever go to that is government has a public comment section, every single one of them, including our boards and commissions, and there's a reason for that, because we're here to serve you. You don't take up our time. You are what we're here for. So, I am aware of some push by some councils to believe that they are burdened by having too much time taken up by the citizens. I do not share that opinion, and I hope that this council never goes in that direction. And thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will do my best to make this brief, and I know we're getting past nine o'clock at this point. To start on the housing issue, I think that several folks brought various issues up, Mr. Frazier, Ms. Beetz, Mr. Reagan, Ms. Sirfoss, Mr. Curdo. We had ADUs, we have short-term rentals, we have just the general character of the neighborhood, density, and as Mayor Protem mentioned when she joined council three years ago, density and really the character of these neighborhoods was the number-one issue. I've got three more years ahead of me, and I think even when I get done, it will still be the number-one issue that I hear about in terms of frequency. I think really the neighborhoods and how our homes are built are what people think of as the community, and that's our building block there. And we certainly have folks, you know, I've got a few younger friends that they love the look of these modern, he calls them Lego homes, which they almost look like, and then as alluded to, there's some very, very beautiful older homes, and that is a constant balance for starting to, keeping a strike. Right now, the zoning code allows for a lot of use-by-right, demolitions of homes and re-screeping of homes, and that is something that council may need to look at at some point, is limiting use-by-right. That gets into another property issue, which leads us back to ADUs, and so some of these are circular to me. I will say to Mr. Muth, he told the story where he wanted to build the ADU so he could have a place for his son. Those, to me, are hands-down the most compelling stories I hear for ADUs, and so folks that they've got a child, aging parent, relative, whatever the case may be, and those, to me, are front and center when this argument comes around. Outside of that, I certainly appreciate those folks in the neighborhood who, they bought their house in that neighborhood in a certain condition and in a certain character, and they're hoping to preserve that. Again, that's an ongoing issue, but I think that we'll be dealing with that for the next three years. Ms. Holtz and Ms. Dickerson, very good points made on the audit process. We had a study session on that tonight. I think it's going to be extremely transparent the whole way we go through. Any suggestions or questions, please send them my way. I'm happy to raise them during any one of our study sessions or even when we get it to the daisier. Ms. Deal, again, I think has stayed tremendously optimistic through her ordeal, and I give her a ton of credit for that. Briefly on decorum, I think that when that flood happened, it really brought a lot of emotions to the surface, and it was a tremendously tragic time for a lot of folks, and I think that people really had some raw emotions that they expressed in here, and I think that this was a good place for them to do that and to really get council's attention as well. And I think that from there, we never quite got the handle on it again, and it seems like everybody is really coming back to a point of general cooperation, which is, I think, again, the spirit of the city. I will say this at the end of the day, though. I asked for this job. I'm grateful for it. It certainly wasn't for the pay, and I doubt everybody up here was knocking on doors for pay when they were asking everybody for their vote. So, it... Councilmember Barantine is right. It is our privilege to sit here and hear from the citizens, and really, you are the guiding voices for us. So, I asked for the job. I'm grateful for it. So, any input I get and feedback I get, it's healthy for me, and it's educational for me, too. And the final one that I'll end with, and it sounds like there's a collective concern, is the situation that Mr. and Mrs. Dean described with the passing of their nephew. And it looks like we're seeking more information. I grabbed some accounts or some contact information from Mr. Dean as well, but that is very concerning, and I think that our first responders do a tremendous job in the city, but really, even one that goes not well, we really should have all the details on it, see if there's places we can do better or correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Communications, Proclamations, and Appointments. This evening, we have a proclamation declaring December 15, 2018, as Bill of Rights Day in the city of Inglewood. Whereas the first 10 amendments to the Constitution of the United States of America, known as the Bill of Rights, were ratified on December 15, 1791, and whereas December 15, 2018, marks the 227th anniversary of the ratification of the Bill of Rights to the United States Constitution, and whereas the Bill of Rights recognizes, affirms, and protects fundamental human and civil rights for which persons of all races have struggled for thousands of years, and whereas the Bill of Rights is the foundation of American liberty, securing our most fundamental rights, including the freedom to speak, assemble, and practice our faith as we please, and whereas to preserve the rights and freedoms secured by the Bill of Rights, our forefathers and hundreds of thousands of men and women serving with police agencies and the armed forces of the United States have sacrificed, suffered, and died. And whereas the rights and freedoms guaranteed by the Bill of Rights deserve perennial celebration, and the sacrifices made to protect the Bill of Rights deserve eternal remembrance, and whereas to commemorate the Bill of Rights with a special day honoring the fundamental rights it enshrines and the sacrifices made to create and preserve these rights and proclaims these rights to the citizens of Inglewood, to this nation, and to the world. Now, therefore, I, Rita Russell, Mayor Protem of the city of Inglewood, Colorado, hereby proclaim December 15, 2018, as Bill of Rights Day and urge all citizens of Inglewood, Colorado, to observe Bill of Rights Day in a manner that brings to mind the meaning and importance of each of the 10 amendments contained in the Bill of Rights, given under my hand and sealed this third day of December, 2018. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I wondered if you might let everybody know about the book and where they came from, when you have a minute.
I will do that. I was going to do it. On the back table, I believe, there's only one left. Have you all picked up the Bill of... Oh, there's a whole box back there. I want everyone to get at least one. I think you can have more than one. I actually went to the survival store, and Bob Ferris, the owner of the survival store, gave me a box to distribute because it is about our fundamental rights, and we need to know that. And actually, in the back of this pocket thing of the Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Independence is there. It is really the Declaration of Independence that gives us our rights, but it is the Bill of Rights that guarantee those freedoms. So, please, take as many as you want and hand them out to your friends. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, five ice.
Thank you very much.
So, there was no cost? He did that at his...
There was no cost. He did that because he wants to get the word out about our rights, so...
We should thank him. That was very nice. I thought we did this.
Okay, we're moving on to Agenda Item 9, Consent Agenda Items. Approval of ordinances on first reading. I would like to pull a couple of them. I would like to pull 9A1 and 9A2 and 9B2. So, other than those, would someone, I entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve consent agenda items 9B1, 9B1, 3, 4, and 5.
Okay, thank you. And a second. Is there any discussion on any of these or any questions? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, five ice.
Thank you. Then, going back to Agenda Item A1, Council Bill 46, Approve an Intergovernmental Agreement with Cherry Hills Village for Vehicle Maintenance and Repair. Staff recommends that council approve a bill for an ordinance to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Cherry Hills Village for vehicle maintenance and repair. Public Works Director Maria DeAndrea is here to answer any questions. Does council have any questions? I have, on the back page of the council communication, where it talks about, this change will generate revenue of approximately $48,000 annually for Inglewood and represents an anticipated increase of $9,778 over 2017 costs. And then it says the alternative, if we don't approve this, is we may have to eliminate one fleet technician. What is the salary of one fleet technician?
I'm not certain off the top of my head. I believe we pay for like a fleet two or mechanic level two, which would be in the middle range, somewhere between, I want to say, $18 to $20, with, which with benefits is probably around $54,000 to $55,000.
Okay, so...
Yes, seeing off the top.
And, all right, did that, was that true, the alternative is to lay off at least one fleet technician? Is that if both of these do not get approved or even, are we going to lay off two fleet technicians if both of them did not get approved?
Likely not, no. So, we would have to reevaluate at that point. I think the intent of the statement is that we have additional staff on hand to handle those two separate agreements. Because we have a larger number of vehicles to maintain, we get economics of scale by, through our, the management staff as well as our fleet mechanic staff. So, if we, for some reason, one or both of these were not approved, then we would have to reevaluate our staffing levels.
Okay, and I also noticed that current vehicle labor rates range from $135 to $155 per hour, but we're only raising our rate to $96.29 per hour. If we choose not to do this for Cherry Hills Village, are they going, the lowest rate they're going to get is $135 an hour?
They would have to seek other alternatives, which might be private sector, which is what that $135 to $155 rate is based on. So, for example, that might be at the local car dealers or another mechanic shop. If they perhaps could find other alternatives with other governmental agencies where, again, they could pool their services, they might find something less than that rate.
Okay, so, really, my concern in asking these questions is if we're paying a fleet technician $54,000 a year with benefits and we're only taking in $48,000 a year, we're losing money to do work for them. Is that an accurate assessment or no?
No, I would say not, because we're still working on our own vehicles as well. We have roughly 300 and some pieces of equipment, whereas the Cherry Hills Village and the Sheridan pieces together are just over 100. So, together combined, just vehicles without counting equipment that we maintain is just over 400. So, they represent about 25%, I would say roughly, of the number of vehicles that we maintain. So, again, we have to look at not only that they're not solely just doing Cherry Hills and Sheridan's vehicles, but also our own internal vehicles as well.
Okay, and then just one other question. This would involve both of them together. On this paperwork, it says we're taking in $48,000 annually from Cherry Hills Village, and they have 64 vehicles, and Sheridan has 41 vehicles, and we're taking in $58,000.
Yes, and that's based on historical amounts, and I would say then, just in general, that Cherry Hills Village has required more maintenance costs and probably has generally overall older fleet, and therefore is required a higher level of service or more maintenance as a result.
You mean Sheridan, probably.
Excuse me, Sheridan.
That's okay, yes, that's fine. Okay, so you are recommending that we approve this?
Yes, and both Sheridan and Cherry Hills Village have both approved those agreements already, so their councils are in agreement with those.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
They used to threaten us with that they'd just do their own facility, but now it was a little odd to see that it was, that we would decrease our staff. She makes a good point, and I appreciate your giving us the information, that they don't just work on those vehicles, so more than likely, we wouldn't get rid of somebody, but we would have to... I mean, if they're only working 20% of the time, 25% of the time on theirs, then it would be unlikely that we would get rid of a technician, because we'd be losing the 75% of the time that they're working on ours. So, maybe as we move forward with this, if we could get a little bit better information on how the staffing works and how we're doing that, so that it is comments like that that are kind of confusing when they come through like that. I mean, because we're not paying for the whole technician with that, and it does make it a little confusing on why we have that person there if they're only working on it 25% of the time. So, if we could get a little more information as we go into the next budget cycle, I'd appreciate that, but thanks for a lot of the clarification.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve consent agenda items 91 and 92.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you. Now moving on to Council Bill 9, or the Agenda Item 9B2.
There's consent agenda item 9B2.
I apologize for not stopping you earlier. I was double checking.
Yeah.
We needed to approve Council Bill 46 and 47 separately.
Separately? Okay, so can we count that for the first one? Or do we have to go back and, all right?
I move to approve consent agenda item 9A1.
Please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show, five ayes.
I move to approve consent agenda item 9A2.
Please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show, five ayes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9B2. Wastewater rate increase. Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Brennan? Actually, let me read this. Staff recommends city council approve by ordinance a seven percent rate increase for wastewater utility service to become effective January 1st, 2019. This increase is anticipated to be in place for 2019 only. Future wastewater rates will be established following the cost of service study scheduled to be completed by the end of the second quarter of 2019 and Utilities Director Tom Brennan is here. So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brennan? I did, I did pull this. And the reason I pulled this is because, and it probably shouldn't have been put on the consent agenda item and it was my fault for not noticing that, is because there were two no votes on this, so unless someone is changing their mind. So I'm not sure that we have any questions. Okay, if not, please vote.
No.
I move to approve consent agenda item 9B2.
Thank you. Second? Is there a second?
Sounded like you seconded.
I could do that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Are we voting now?
Yes, please, are, do you have something to say? Yes, Councilmember Berentine.
I just wanna restate, I didn't vote for it the first time. I believe that we should have been a little bit more upfront about why we're raising this rate is to go ahead and create the fund, get the fund balance back up. I think that that was an honest statement made by our new wastewater treatment plant director. And so I wish the information had been posed a little bit more transparently. Thank you for your work on it, but I voted no the first time and my reasons remain the same for the second.
And I echo that as well. I do appreciate your work on it. And I have, I have the same reasons. I was a little concerned that there wasn't more transparency upfront and I do believe that perhaps the biogas is really the reason for this. So I will be voting no. So thank you very much. Please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show, three ayes and two nays, the two nays being Mayor Protem Russell and Councilmember Berentine.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11B, Approval of Ordinances on Second Reading. 11B1 is an intergovernmental sub-grantee agreement for the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program. Staff recommends that city council authorize the execution of an intergovernmental sub-grantee agreement for the 2018 Arapahoe County Community Development Block Grant Program between Arapahoe County Board of County Commissioners and the City of Inglewood. Planning Manager Wade Burkholder, I believe, is here.
Mayor Protem, I would actually like to make a motion to table this until we have all seven members of council present. So, next meeting?
A second.
I would third that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Berentine.
Thank you.
And is there any discussion? Councilmember Berentine?
I would agree. I mean, my, I appreciate your recognition that my vote will stay the same and that if the full council should probably go ahead and, and address this. As long as the affirmatively furthering fair housing is in there, I believe that we're putting the city at risk. I believe that. I've done the research for it. I've done the work for it. My vote isn't going to change. So I believe that if this is something council would like to see go to the entire council, probably would be best because it would put it in jeopardy with two members missing tonight. And maybe that's not the representation the city wants, but I cannot change what I would vote on. So I understand your position on this, council. Member Martinez, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Any other further discussion? Please vote whether we're going to table this.
All votes being cast, let the record show, five ayes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11B2, the amended accessory dwelling unit ordinance, the second reading. Community development staff recommends an affirmative vote on the council amended planning and zoning commission recommended ADU ordinance.
Mayor Protem, I would also like to make a motion to table this until all seven members of council are present.
I'll second that.
All right, and we heard that input tonight too, so. Councilmember Questa?
If it's open to comment, yeah, this is a big issue and we've worked on it for a long time. I think it is fair that District 1 and District 2 have their representatives here as well and we take the final vote on that. So I also certainly support tabling for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, please vote on whether to table the ADU also.
All votes being cast, let the record show, five ayes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11C1, Open Gov Software Services Agreement Renewal. Staff recommends that city council approve a three-year renewal of the Open Gov, Inc. Software Services Agreement, 2019 to 2021. The total amount of the agreement is $28,479.45, nine thousand per year plus an additional two months to align with the fiscal year dates. The city may terminate the agreement without penalty in the event of non-appropriation in subsequent budget years. Our staff source is Acting Finance and Administrative Services Director Maria Saboda. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. As was mentioned, I'm seeking approval by motion of a three-year renewal of the Open Gov, Inc. Software Services Agreement. In late 2015, the city entered into a three-year agreement with Open Gov, Inc. for the use of proprietary web application for transparency into the financials, including the general ledger, the chart of accounts, our current year spending, our balance sheet, and monthly sales and use tax revenues. Multiple years of data are available to the public and to staff through this online portal. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I would, Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Director. This is, I think, more of a technical question, again, on the bidding process, which we go over frequently and I know I'm the one usually asking the questions. This is below thirty, as I'm seeing it. I got twenty-eight thousand and some change. The list price was thirty-one. I thought it was anything above thirty came before us. Is, is that still the threshold? Is thirty?
It's twenty-five.
Thank you, thank you. So this is over twenty-five. Thank you, Director. Thank you.
So, my question is, even though this is over twenty-five, logistically, is it only nine thousand per year that we are approving? I guess that's a question for the city attorney.
You're approving an agreement for $28,479, understanding that the impact is nine thousand dollars per year. And if at any point council wants to terminate this agreement, you may do so without penalty, which would reduce the amount of money paid to this entity. Under Director Sabada's direction, staff is, is working to bring more contracts to council so that you see more day-to-day of what's happening. So when they get close to this line, she's, she's directing that they come to council. So you may see a few more that, than you have in the past.
Okay, thank you. And so my other question, it's a proprietary product, meaning that we cannot get this anyplace else?
It's my understanding that, that is correct. It's a preparat, propri, it's late.
Yes, it is.
Oh, my heavens, and I have called proprietary system that we would not be able to purchase elsewhere. Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilmember Questa?
You bet. Thank you. Again, and I know that we're gonna be having a study session on bidding and what should these thresholds be. I do appreciate that even if they're getting close to the line, you're bringing them forward. It's good that it comes in front of council and I appreciate you allowing us to review it and put the vote on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Agenda Item 11C1.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to Agenda Item 12, Mayor's Choice. I just would like to share that the ringing in the holidays concert and the Christmas tree lighting event went very well. Even though it was a last minute, it was a little chilly out there, but the high schools, the high school, the middle school and I think once it was announced as Bishop and once it was announced as Clayton. So I'm not exactly, was it both of them? It was Clayton. They did a great job and I just am very thankful for Randy Penn and the work that the chamber did to make this event possible. And I'm looking forward to talking about perhaps doing a parade and the event next year in February. I mean, we'll talk about it, whether we're gonna move forward with that, but there was that. And also, I want to remind everyone that the chamber holiday party is at the Alk Lodge on the 11th of December from six to nine-thirty. And we could either all go together, I mean, if you're interested in getting Christopher to RSVP, we could all sit at a table or we can all go individually. It doesn't really matter, so. Just give me feedback. It's six to nine-thirty on the 11th. Okay, Councilmember's Choice, Councilmember Martinez, would you like to start?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everyone for coming tonight and also want to thank all the folks that came for the student art calendar. That's one of my favorite things that we do every year and it was great to see such a good turnout from the students and their families and the educators and remind everybody that there are calendars in the back. So please take some and I think if, if you don't pick one up tonight, you can get them in the library. I believe that's right. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I too wanna thank everyone who came tonight and all you citizens who always come and, and share your, your opinions and your views with us. I also wanna congratulate once again the students that entered the art contest and those that were named as winners and showcased in the calendar. And I think that's about it. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I wanna thank all the kids. They did a beautiful job. Well, not all of them are kids, but we had, we had more really, really little ones this year. It was, it was, it was surprising. I met him out, him out in the hall and I just, I couldn't even believe he was in school, let alone he could have this kind of talent. So they're very creative, all of them, and it was, that was very enjoyable. I do want to, if there's any questions on the council request for either the, I would like to make sure that we don't go too far astray and starting for anybody to believe that it's the privileged thing. So if we could get, I did mean it when I said I want a council request on that. We're supposed to let the public speak so that we don't go too far astray on that. And then if there's any other questions, I think the, the family brought up quite a few things and it was difficult to hear. I'm great, I'm very grateful that they, Mayor Protem took a break after that because that was, I'm sure it's hard, it was hard for them to get up and talk and it was hard to hear. But I'm not sure we vetted all of that out, so if you have any questions, I mean, maybe we could get a little bit more information and kind of handle it as organized and less emotional as, as we can so that we're making sure. I, I thank them for coming because if there is something we can fix, then somebody else may do better in the future. And I think that that was very brave of them and I'm grateful for that and their concern of their other citizens here. The Christmas tree lighting was really amazing. It was a lot of fun. Thank you to the interim city manager for coming. And it was, it was just a really nice event considering how we had no notice really from the chamber that it wasn't gonna go through. And to put that together, so thank you to the high school and Bishop and Clayton and to the choir. It was amazing that that could be put together in such a short period of time and reminds us how much talent we've got in the community, art and singing. I mean, we've got a well-rounded bunch of people and a lot of people had fun, especially joining in for the Christmas carols. As the liaison with the Water and, one of the liaisons with the Councilmember Wink and the Mayor Olson as well, they brought up at the last meeting that they, they have some changes that they're gonna be bringing forward and I would like to know when that's gonna come to council to be discussed. Just in talking to some of the citizens, just about no longer doing the tagging or going ahead and identifying, raising the late fees, doing some, it just, doing it via mail rather than through the door tags. Just, I was surprised at the pushback that I got from some people on that. So I, I hope that's coming to us for a discussion for all of council pretty soon before it gets too far down the road with them implementing any of this or, or doing any cost to implement it. Other than that, it's just been amazing going to all of the concerts and recitals and things and this is such a nice time for family and getting our community together and I think it shows. So thanks, really appreciate everybody came out. We keep each time having more and more people come and I'm grateful for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The first one I wanted to touch on was, I believe on two separate occasions now, we've discussed getting, and it might be redacted, copies of the exit interviews from staff that have left. And I'm not sure that we ever set the period of time if we're gonna go back two years, three years. But I believe that was a point of the discussion as well. I, I went through the information we provided, we've been provided on council member's request and I didn't see it in there. It's very possible I overlooked it as well. Is that something we've been provided yet?
I'll look into it. I'm not, not sure what the status of that is, but I'll, I'll get back to you for sure.
Very good, thank you. I would like to echo the praise and thanks for the Christmas lighting, the Christmas tree lighting. It was terrific, really good crowd. It's always fun. The Guild was offering a lot of things for kids afterwards. You could do a lot without any cost, so it's nice to have those things for the community, that people can bring their kids out and there really isn't an expense associated with it. And the final one is the, the art calendar as well. And there's a tremendous amount of skill and creativity that we have amongst our, our children. Even the sidebar pieces of art in the calendar are really, really good. And we do a lot of critical city business up here, but these events are refreshing and they make me optimistic. So I really appreciate that we have that and those are good. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. City managers report?
I just wanted to say that the Cultural Arts Commission puts a lot of time and effort into the calendar. I mean, they're not the creative artists, but I wanted to give them a little public praise for the amount of time that they spend sorting through so many wonderful submissions to come up with those top thirteen. So that's tough duty, but good duty too. So, other than that, no report.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. City, okay. This, this meeting is adjourned.
I just thank you to Councilmember Martinez for doing the work.
I do that, too. That's the fun stuff, to get to come.
You did a great job tonight.
It's hard whittling down those pieces of art.
When do they, what do you do that?
It was in this--
No, 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 I mean, like, how far in advance do--